...meeting of Wednesday, October 19th, 2016 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
As we prepare for our moment of silent meditation, we ask that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, both locally and globally. We also want to take a moment to remember the families of those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. A notable, recognizable voice, literally, of my childhood in this community's history, Jim Lekorchik, transitioned and passed on since we were last here, as well as another son of this city who dedicated his life to service as well, Mr. Ron Steele, also has passed since we were in these chambers. And again, all those others that we may not know, who may not have been large in our community, but large in their families and large in their own space. Finally, I ask that we... Ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes for the meeting of October 5th, 2016, and bills for payment on October 14th and 21st, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting. Citizens to be heard.
Thank you, President Mersky. Councilman, my old colleague Mel Witherspoon of CAS, special hello to both all of you. I'm here today...
Name and address for the record.
That's right. Sorry. Ian Murray, 333 West 9th, Erie, Pennsylvania. I'm here to address the vote on the EMTA agreement. I have full confidence that we have at least, if I can count votes, at least five, but I'm not here to persuade anybody except to talk to the two that may not be voting for this. We're at a crossroads in our community. I mean, all you have to do is read the Charles Bukey report. All you have to do, which you've all done, being part of this city for so long, the fabric of it and the heart of it, you know how this town is hurting. You know how the jobs we've lost. You know the decay and the degradation of the inner city and the housing stock. So, I don't need to go through a litany of that. We all understand that. And one of the great dysfunctions of this northwest Pennsylvania, Erie County in particular, is that we can never seem to get on the right page or the same page. Regional cooperation is a myth, not a reality. We have fiefdoms, we have political entities, we were all over the map, and yet, we have a town, a region, in crisis. I think this vote, and the reason I'm here, is really... Comes at a time where we're at a crossroads and a tipping point. This whole community, this whole region, is waiting for politicians to lead, and lead in concert with their counterparts wherever they may be. I applaud Joe Sennett and Kathy Dahlkemper for forging an agreement together, making concessions, getting the agreement right. Not only getting it right, but you have a letter from the Department of Transportation endorsing that agreement, and then outlining, and I won't take the time to do it, the gravity if we don't vote for this agreement. So, my voice is really not to the city council, it's to the county council that's stuck at 33 right now. And what I think we need to understand here, that if we are for regional cooperation, and you have every legislator, Republican and Democrat, in the whole northwest region, solidly endorsing this agreement, so we do not want to be next Tuesday when the deadline occurs, and find the county council, the 33 vote, the three that are against it, whether it's Fiore, or it's Kyle, or it's Andre, one of them, or all of them, need to move over and vote for this agreement. Bottom line. Because the fail at it is a failure of this community and the tipping point I talked about. So, I urge a 7-0 vote. Send a message to this community that we're going to work together for the future of this community together. We're going to work with this agreement, and we're going to let this be a platform and example of how we're going to lead and govern in the future. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Joseph Kerlett, Mel Glenn Apartments, Gary, PA, Mill Creek. Last night meeting, I was at council. Mr. Mersky and I had a little dispute on the language of citizens to be heard, and he objected and flat-out refused to read the code for citizens to be heard. So, I'd like to read it to the public tonight, because this council has been bogus for years, not speaking back to the public that takes their time, money, and energy to come down here to voice their concerns. This came out of the codified ordinance for codified codes here in... Ordinance is here in Erie, for the city of Erie. This came out of Section 112, 112.10. Section D says, "Citizens to be heard." I'd just like to read two sentences, and then proceed with my presentation. No person other than a member of council and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of council... And this is the important part, without the permission of the presiding officer. Who is the presiding officer?
The chair, the president of council.
And who is that?
Well, this chair, it's me.
Who was your name?
Continue, please.
Excuse me?
You can continue.
Your name, please, for the record?
For the record, Mr. Mersky.
Okay. This is the most important sentence. No question shall be asked a councilperson except to the presiding officer. Is that clear? In other words, the citizens can talk to councilmembers as long as they go through the president?
Right.
Okay.
This goes to Mr. CAS. This goes to Mr. CAS. Through me.
That's the email I sent you on August 3rd, Mr. CAS. How do you pronounce your name, sir? How do you pronounce your last name?
Which one?
Your last name.
Kwiatowski.
Kwiatowski, good. I got it now. Yeah. You caught seeing that?
No, because I've been on the road for a few weeks. As I explained to you, as I explained to you...
Look at the date. It's August 3rd. This is October.
Mr. Kwiatowski.
Am I supposed to debate him?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Could you read it now, sir? You haven't read it now? I want some feedback. That's why I'm here.
This is your time to be heard.
And it's for council to hear, for me to hear from council.
Right.
According to the code.
And as the chair...
According to the code.
Correct. And as the chair, I'm saying it's your turn to talk. Mr. Kwiatowski is not to speak right now.
You're violating the code, Mr. President?
No, I'm enforcing the code.
No, you're not. Enforcing the code, he speaks.
With the permission of the chair.
Let's say, "Permission." Without permission, no question will be asked, the council except to the presiding officer. Has nothing to do with permission, sir. He's equal, just as you. You just have a higher title.
Mr. Carley, in our rules of council, we have set forth standing procedures that which you voted on at the first meeting. Part of that was, if I recall, that this is the time for the citizens to be heard and councils not to speak, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
What is this, sir? What is this?
Wait.
Don't you read it. Came out of your code.
Mr. Kerlett, if you'd like to wait after the meeting, Mr. Kwiatowski will address you.
No, I'm going to get a meeting date and time with him right now. I've been waiting since August.
Thank you.
Since August.
Okay, thank you. Next citizen to be heard.
For the record, I'm Julie Minnick, 1027 West 37th Street. Hello, council. Nice to see you.
Hello.
Hi. I'm representing all of board Erie today. As you know, I'm Assistant Executive... The Assistant Executive of all of board Erie, and I'm here to talk to you about the charter proposal. And the main reason I want to talk to you all about this is we need to keep this local. We need to have a place where we can go and talk to the local board and express our concerns. So, we need to keep this local. We at all of board Erie want service to continue as it is, and we know that there are plans in the future to expand service. We want that to continue, and we support that. All of board Erie tries to increase ridership and get more routes. I've personally seen two or three more routes gotten because of all of board Erie intervention. However, none of this can continue if the EMTA charter proposal is not passed. This is a personal and professional issue for me. I'm a choice rider, which means I have a car, and I choose to ride the bus certain I did what I advise all people who ask me professionally. I bought a house on bus line, and I have staked $100,000 property on that line. My fear is, and maybe it's justified, maybe it's not, I haven't heard the official word, that my route will be cut because it is not the most popular route. This would inconvenience me, and I know there are several other people who use routes like this. Some routes are very popular, some routes get used at peak times and then are basically left. There are still people who ride buses at non-peak times. One thing that concerns me is if there is a state takeover, that 20% of the buses currently running will be, I guess, not running anymore. And what happens to that percentage of the population that rides a bus that is not a popular bus, or bus that is not only used at peak times but non-peak times? I know I've read in the press that all of city council is going to vote to pass a new charter. I hope that's true. But there's more at stake than just a bus. This is how citizens interact with local government. We have a board that we can talk to, we have a place we can go, we have local officials that we can talk to, and I really urge you to talk among yourselves and to reach out to county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard.
How do you do, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Dale Crawford. I live at 917 West 8th Streets. I and my wife are a couple that takes our dogs frequently out to the Larry Fabrizi Dog Park. Do any of you ever go out there? Am I allowed to ask that? The rumor that is floating around, around the people that go there, is that there is city... The city plans to build a kids' playground out there. Is that true? Okay. I feel, and just about every single one of the people out at the dog park feel that this is an accident waiting to happen. There have already been some instances of unsupervised children being in the dog park, and because they come up on the dogs suddenly, they have been bitten, and one even went over to the large dog's side, and he was immediately mobbed by a lot of the large dogs and scratched. I feel the unsupervised children problem will only continue if a playground is installed. We feel that a better use of the area would be a picnic area with some grills and some picnic tables there. We just had a birthday party for one of the dogs that is a rescue dog, and this was a couple of weeks ago on a Sunday. We had a very, very good time out there, and we would hope that city council would go ahead and approve the funds, go ahead and make a bit of a picnic area out there instead of the kids' playground. Some of these dogs are rescue dogs who may have issues with little kids. Some of the dogs are okay with other dogs and adults, but not with children. And we feel that, once again, this is going to open up the city to possibly some lawsuits as well with children getting hurt out there, and as well as the wear and tear in the area as well. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Pastor Holminsky. I live at 5715 Langmore Lane. I want to thank the council for taking the courage and having the courage in stopping the county council's attempt to take over the EMTA. The men of the county council wanted to take the power of appointment away from the county executive for themselves. I see this as a tragedy. I applaud how awesome the mayor and the county executive worked to solve this resolution. This system has worked for 50 years and has grown and expanded services, built a new facility, and taken over a flailing lift system from the county. I lived through broken buses. I lived riding on the lift buses that the doors had to be closed with bungee cords. I lived through buses being broken down and have been towed back in. I lived through the minutes from 1993 to 1997 until they finally convinced the EMTA board to take over everything, and I gave the solicitor the ordinance, ordinance 69 in 1997. So, that's my fear. That's my fear. I don't want to go back to the old, broken-down buses. I think some of the men on county council wanted their political power and saw an opportunity here, and I applaud you again for stopping them. I can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart. The priority should be to serve us, your constituents, people with disabilities, senior citizens, students, not for political power. Staying the course, I don't want to go every five years. I think, and I agree with the letter I have a copy of from Secretary Richards to Andre Horton, saying, "This is a good plan. This is a very good plan. 10 years will work very well." So, I am going to speak at county council. They may not like what I have to say, but that's their choice. As far as an advisory group, there are three in place. I am currently the E and D Chair, that's me, elderly and disabled for Erie County. Jessica Mulksen from Voices Independence leaves a quality assurance, and Megan Cousins from the EMTA has her own input from people who only ride the buses. So, between these three groups that meet monthly and/or quarterly, we have good input. I was recently appointed co-chair for the mayor's roundtable of disability with Moss Saleh here. So, I want to thank you again from the bottom of my heart. It's not broken. We don't have to fix it. I'm on conference calls for the statewide, where everybody's looking at what's happening in Erie, Pennsylvania, and everybody's asking questions. Some people from PennDOT were on the last call, and they said, "We cannot comment on this right now." So, please, vote this through. We need to send a message to county council. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Richard Wagner, 4228 State Street. I know you're entering into your budget session, and I think it's time for you people to consider maybe getting your own solicitor. I just think that might be something on your agenda. I attended Mr. Bukey's presentation at the Jefferson Center on October 12th. It was very well-attended, unlike the night city council held their first and only information gathering meeting in council chambers. I was surprised that only one councilman bothered to attend Mr. Bukey's presentation. I was also surprised when Mr. Bukey very candidly spoke to the fact that the Senate administration, upon receiving his plan, redacted many of the key issues that would have to be implemented to bring Erie back from itself-inflicted demise. I enjoyed the candor, and even though I might not agree with Mr. Bukey's premise, something has to be done. The next day in the paper, council was defended by one of his councilmen for the lack of representation at the October 12th meeting. It was stated that all the councilmen have full-time jobs and responsibilities. We can't expect these part-time councilmen to devote the necessary time to learn about the Bukey Plan. I thought back to myself and said, "During the political campaign to acquire these jobs, I wonder how many of the councilmen use as their campaign promise, 'Remember, I'm only part-time, and I won't be able to serve the needs of the city on a full-time basis.'" I wonder how many of you would be sitting up there if you'd said that. While I'm on this issue, every one of you should be required to have your phone number and address listed on Erie's website under council members. It's important to get in touch with you people. Another concern, and I'm going to wander a little bit. Our school district is running a survey, asking for suggestions and priorities that the school district should be implementing. I took the survey. It's skewed. It's not a problem-solving document. It's just some ammunition for Mr. Baden to use to justify and avoid the inevitable. The first question is, "Are you a city of Erie resident?" The first question should really be, "Are you a citizen of Erie taxpayer?" I would suggest that most of the people answering the school district's questionnaire don't care where the money is coming from. They only care about a school where they can send their children, and the funding is secondary. While I was taking the survey, I was thinking to myself, "Where's that extra $3,000 that I have to pay by November 30th coming from? I will make two separate payments in 2016 to support the struggling school district." It's not fair, and frankly, I don't think it's legal. A judge just took $11 million out of Erie County's operating budgets. The casino fee was deemed unconstitutional. What a surprise. Now, everyone, the county exec, Perry Woods, and several of the other communities that benefited from the 11 million are now scrambling. About the same time, I read the article in Times where the county exec was almost jubilant that they entered into a pilot program with LeCom, and instead of 100% of the taxes due on 14 properties owned by LeCom, the county settled on a 50% payment. Let me see if I understand this. We are demanding $11 million from a casino, and I wouldn't consider it a tax, and we won't take any less. It's vital to the... It's vital to the operations of Erie County, but in the same breath, we will let LeCom negotiate a less fair amount of tax on their property, and might I mention that LeCom has threatened Mill Creek Township about their newest $80 million project on Peach Street and moving it elsewhere if there isn't some sort of relief for taxes on the Peach Street project. There are two areas in this county of ours that I consider marketable, the Bayfront and Upper Peach, but both organizations that control these vital areas want something for nothing. It has to stop. We can't grow. We can't survive without a fair and equitable tax system, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard.
Good evening, council. My name is Gary Grak, 3317 Elliott Road. I'm also the board chair for the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority. I come to you tonight, council, to thank Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Kwiatowski, and Mr. Jones for their first vote. I'm asking the rest of the council to follow suit and give us a 7-0 vote tonight, and send a message, because it's very important that we keep our transit system running in the city of Erie. We will not have the system that we have now if the state takes it over. Mr. Winarski and Mr. Mersky have worked for almost 19 months on this, and it wasn't a last-minute deal. I commend the mayor, I commend county executive Kathy Dahlkemper for coming to the table and truly wanting to make a deal which is best for our citizens in the city of Erie and the county. We talk regionalization all the time, but if we lose our transit authority, we will no longer be regional. The people that ride the buses and the left, I see them at every meeting, and they truly rely on us. We're the lucky ones. I can get in my car, and I can go wherever I want, but there's people that rely on us weekly and daily to get to the doctor, to get to work. The routes will be cut, and the citizens are going to suffer. So, I'm asking you to please pass tonight, 7-0, that's what I'm hoping for, and asking you to go to county council and ask them to please sign this, because it's the best things for the citizens of the city of Erie. Without our transit system, we are going to be lost. There will be no regionalization. You have to have the system in place. It's a good deal. They negotiated it, and it was the right thing to do for our community. Please, send the message. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard.
Good evening. My name's John Wayley. I live at 447 Gordon Lane in Erie. I'll get into my beef in a minute, but I do want to start off with something different tonight. I talk to a lot of people every week. I'm on Facebook. I meet them in coffee shops, whatever. And one of the things they always say to me about every one of you up there, "You're nice people. You're Erie people." I don't disagree with that. Sonya, we talked yesterday. Mel, we swam in the PennDOT pool with our kids and your grandkids 20 years ago. Dave, we've had coffee. Bob, you and I less so, but maybe someday we'll have coffee. I would never doubt that you're not nice people, and when I come up here and complain, it's not personal, it's business. I have... I'll use an example. The guy at Wells Fargo, the CEO, he was a great guy, super guy, gave money to charity, but he ripped off the American taxpayer for millions of dollars. He ripped off millions of people. He was a nice guy, right? So, he didn't do nice things, but he was a nice guy. So, I think all of you are nice people. I like you, and I'm glad you all raised your hand and spent your time and money. You got elected, you're here, you're here tonight. So, I need... I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. I do applaud each and every one of you, and I think you do try. That being said, there's a multitude of issues that are affecting the city. Dog parks, EMTA, taxes, everything. And the EMTA issue has finally come to a head after 15, 18, 19 months, whoever you want to listen to. It seems like the threat of a PennDOT takeover is what it took on a Friday night to get some people in a room to say, "Okay, okay, I guess you're serious. some people in a room to say, okay, okay, I guess you're serious, let's settle this thing. Part of politics would be the ability to convince people of your ideas, sell your ideas, work together, demand somebody's attention, learn when to compromise, learn what's important, et cetera. So it looks like for 18 months, no one's really serious about it. It was going to happen, going to happen sooner or later, blah, blah, blah. And you guys wanted what you wanted, for whatever reasons. County wanted what they wanted, and no one wanted to talk. Well, then dad came in, is going to take the toys, and everybody's real serious now. And I think that's shameful. I think that you had plenty of time, so for the kudos and all the applause of, we're all real happy that the mayor and the county executive worked together, I think it was under threat, and that's why they worked together, and that's kind of sad. And so you guys, as a council, have the ability to not do that. I mentioned two weeks ago, on the same vein, if it took 18 months to come to an agreement on bus service, and who's in charge, and who has the most seats, and blah, 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 how are you doing anything else? And my answer to that is you're really not. Population's dropping, crime is holding steady, taxes are going to go up this December, I'm pretty sure. Businesses are not flocking to town. There's big, big monumental issues. You rushed to pass the comp plan three months ago. Had to do it. Had to pass the comp plan. You have not had a single public meeting where discourse could happen. So Booke had a meeting. He flew back in. He was probably paid, but he came back in, and from all accounts, the day session was not well-attended by political folks. The night session was equally not well-attended. But still, no meetings, no action, just, you had to pass it, and I didn't understand then, and I don't understand now. Haunted House, before I go to EMTA, and I only have like two minutes. There was a haunted house in town that was approved to open on a temporary basis three years ago. Had about a one-month temporary license. They went past that, and they kept open. Building's not sprinkled, doesn't have the right exits, it doesn't have the right fire doors, it doesn't have anything. It's a tragedy waiting to happen. So a couple of folks got real loud on Facebook and Twitter in the last week and a half, and it got shut down yesterday. The code enforcement office in this city signed off on a temporary permit, and that's it, and let it go. They were not supposed to be open. They weren't inspected by the state, they weren't inspected by you, not you, but a division of the city that somebody up there is a liaison to. You, as a team and the mayor, are screaming, we have to have a sixth, or seventh, or however many people in the code enforcement office. Got to have it. No one went to the haunted house and did anything. What if 18 kids would have died of smoke inhalation? Who would have blamed? Somebody. I'll be back next week. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Any other citizens to be heard?
Nice little crowd tonight. My name is McDowell, and my prop is 19th and 18th. You know, I haven't heard any of y'all say anything about that boy that the police beat up. What's the matter? Y'all scared? You shouldn't be. You're grown men. You got a mouth. But you haven't said anything, and you don't hear nothing about it. What they trying to do, sweep it under the rug? You know, y'all need to wake up. You need to wake up and look at reality. What is wrong? Why ain't you saying anything? None of you. None of you have said anything about it. That boy's messed up for life, but you're not saying anything. That's too bad. That's too bad. If don't nobody say nothing, ain't nobody going to do anything. I asked you years ago, how do you train your policeman? I thought the judge and the jury is the one that, you know, took him to the barn. How do you train your policeman? I told you before, whoever said he tried to stab that cop's gun told a lie. That Assistant District Attorney, he admitted that he tried to snap the gun, and ain't nobody saying nothing. You know what? Y'all gonna have to answer to God. Believe me, you gonna answer. You sit up there and look like you're looking. You're gonna answer. You know the right way to go about this. You know. Those policemen should lose their jobs. I'm so glad the God got his hands on me, because if they did that to me, they'd have to kill me. I'd rather be dead. Don't abuse me. Let the law take that course over there in the courthouse. Y'all better wake up. You better wake up. You want to be up there, but you're not doing nothing. Everything Joe wants, Joe gets. I don't know. I don't know. Y'all don't deserve to be up there, to call yourself leaders. A sixth grader could do a better job. Y'all need to wake up. You need to wake up. Things are getting worse in this city. Taxes, taxes, taxes eating us up. Taxes are eating us. People's, what happened to that bond grant? Man, I know years ago, that money was for people's to keep their houses up. Now, all you want to do is tear them down. You got all that money coming in, you want to tear houses down. Why spend that money to tear houses down, when you should be giving it to the people that build their property up? Everybody don't have what it take to keep that property up. So that money was there, but y'all taking and spending for what you want now. It don't make sense. And people's, they're on a fixed income, old folks anyway, on a fixed income, and you're sucking the blood out of them. Those old folks don't mean nothing to y'all. But you keep living, you're going to get old one day, and you're going to understand what I'm trying to tell you. I thank y'all for your time, but I'm trying to tell you something. I know you don't think I know what I'm talking about, but if God didn't leave me here all these years and didn't put something in me, I hope he put something in y'all because
Any other citizens to be heard?
Hello, council members. Mr. President, my name's John Renwick. I live at 1023 West 30th, Erie, PA. I'm also the president and business agent of ATU Local 568, which represents all the EMTA and LIFT employees. And I'm a little baffled, and I just want to say this one thing. EMTA and the city of Erie went into a lawsuit against the county. And from my understanding, the county, or the city, wanted the county to be enforced to abide by the charter. And it was a five-year charter. Now I understand there's going to be a 10-year charter. I've been through many negotiations, many arbitrations, many interest arbitrations. I have never seen a negotiation where you come in with lower years and come out with higher years. That's like coming in with 5% wage increase and going to the judge or the arbitrator and say, oh, no, Mr. Arbitrator, Mr. Judge, we want 10% now. So I think if you realize this whole deal could be resolved with what county council really wanted, is that five-year, which I believe could be holding this up. So I urge you, if this is the case, only takes a phone call. It's only five years. I heard you, Mr. Mersky, and I've talked to you. You know what negotiation's all about, and no one's going to go away happy, but as long as you can walk away satisfied. So five years, I don't think is going to make a difference to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Don Kopelman, 326 Beverly Drive here in city of Erie. And I also want to comment on the length of the agreement. The previous agreement was for 50 years, and the buses kept running and everything for 50 years. So now here we are again, and I think the agreement should not be for three, or five, or 10, but simply follow the lead that worked so well before, 50 years. And if you want to emphasize that a little bit, add another 10 and make it for 60 years. And therefore, we won't have to go through this time and time again in the near future. I think Jim needs to lead the suggestion, since he works with the bus company, or coordinates between the city council and the bus company, that the agreement be for 50 years, or like I said, if you want to add 10, go ahead, but 50 years, 60 years, and then the previous city councils won't be spending time going through this thing again, and the buses will be running. I thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? I was out in the audience earlier, and there are a group of students here from McDowell High School. If someone from your group would like to come up and just introduce yourselves and what class you're from, who's going to be brave enough to do that? Not I, right? I'll call your teacher for extra credit if you need it. All right, we won't look.
Ray, how you doing? Nice to meet you guys. Never, not really new to all of this.
What's your name?
Ray Hickey.
Ray.
It's okay to laugh, you can laugh.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
What's your class?
Mr. Chesney.
Mr. Chesney, and this is what?
Government class.
Government class. Okay, well, welcome to our council meeting.
Nice to be here. How are you guys doing?
We're doing well.
I have one question. I have one question. If you don't mind me asking, what's your name? You, sir?
My name's Greg Carley.
Greg. I was just very curious. You just seem like you're out to the side a little bit. You were out to the side a little bit, so I kind of just...
Yeah.
I know, that's what I was saying. So I just wanted, I was a little curious. Everybody has a name tag.
I see why you're the spokesman of the class.
I'm actually kind of a shy person.
I can tell.
As you can tell, okay. It's nice talking to you guys. Somebody had to stand up, so...
If I, I might interrupt in between the meetings, Mrs. Roby, just so that they can tell them what we're doing, so, just so you know. All right, and we'll continue on. Thank you guys from McDowell for being here, and we hope you learned something. Just think, you two could move to the city and have this job. Think about that. All right, let's continue on with the meeting.
Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15966, and ordinance amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie, by the installation of stop signs at 13 intersections. By Mr. Witherspoon, and seconded by Mr. Kowalski, the council file ordinance number 15966, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council.
Okay, so when we take this vote, if you don't hear anyone speak, that means it's a yes vote. If you want a no vote, that you have to say no. So that's how this works, how our rules are.
Roll call, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council reading and adopt council file ordinance number 15966 by A7, nay zero, on We'll go into new business.
Mr. President? Mr. Winarski? Vote to move the balance of the agenda. You have a motion to move? Do we have a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Mr. Jones. Yeah, so what we did here is, under the new business section, there's a motion to move the balance of the agenda, which would be everyone, we're going to vote on a package of legislation here, all these ordinances and resolutions. Now, what we'll do now is, anyone from council can separate one that they want to pull out and vote on individually, and everything that's left over will vote as a group, up or down. Any separations? I'd like to separate number one and number, where is that one? The Articles of Corporate, number 11.
11. Any other separations? Moving the balance of the agenda then, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the mayor and city solicitor are respectfully requested to prepare an ordinance creating a city revolving loan fund for economic development projects. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull this out to let the citizens know that Mr. Jones and I, Mr. Jones is the liaison to economic development, and he and I have been working on this for quite some time now, at least three or four months. And the state offers an enterprise revolving loan fund, but for the first time in over a decade, it's tapped out. We actually have, because of the Velocity Net Project, and BB Trucking, and Onyx coming in on the 12th Street corridor, there's actually not enough, we're tapped out on the money that we have available to loan out, and this revolving loan fund feeds itself. And so, Mr. Jones and I are talking with economic development. It was suggested that the cities create their own revolving loan fund. We'll be the first city in Pennsylvania to have our own revolving loan fund if this, if we're able to do it. And so, in working with economic development, Chris Mong, our new economic development director, Chris Groner, our coordinator for economic development, and Mr. Jones, our liaison for economic and community development. This is what the will of council, if they vote on it, is, is to create our own fund to expand business and give opportunities to business in Erie to expand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate your graciousness as well. And this is important because we're talking, and I think citizens have actually mentioned, businesses aren't coming. A lot of times, we have to be more proactive, and I think this is one of the ways that we're looking to make some enhancements in the way we do business in relation to new businesses coming in or expanding current opportunities for business growth and development, to be able to have more of a revenue source or a... to be able to have more of a revenue source or a stream of revenue, to be able to loan out and then receive back in, and to be able to grow, again, businesses in our community. So this is one piece of an intricate puzzle that I think we are looking to do and to develop in our community. Somebody said something earlier about, you know, it's not broken, don't fix it. Well, I don't know if I'd so much subscribe to that, but the point is, is that, you know, some things that may not have been broken have been put in place for the, for things to stay the same. But we can't afford to do things the same way we've always done. So some things that we are looking to do, we're going to, we're going to have to have some different ideas and do some things that have never been done before. So, again, I appreciate the economic development department in the city for willing, who's willing to be creative. These are some things, and I think this group, to be honest, and I'll stop, but this council has been, is pretty open, I think, to doing some different things that haven't been done before. That's sometimes why it takes a long time to get stuff done, because we're not just following suit. And so I think there's a freshness that's going to be happening over the next couple of years around economic development. Here's the last thing I'll say about it, is that we have a lot of intelligent individuals in our community. Some of them do come to the mic and podium and have very valid questions, concerns, and issues. But I think, well, in addition to coming to the podium, it's great to be able to have that energy, that intelligence, to be able to help us to find solution as well to some of the challenges that you so well articulate that we have in our community. So I think the combination of what we're trying to do, the combination of working with citizens in the community who have this intelligence and have these ideas, but maybe don't have the legislative position to enact them, that collaboration is what needs to happen a little more often. So, I know I was kind of soapboxy, but I really think that's where we have to go. Mr. Wutherspoon, stop.[724.51][724.51](LAUGHTER). No, but again, I think this is a great opportunity for us to do something different, to do something a little more progressive, and I think it'll be just the beginning of some wonderful economic development processes that we're looking to do in the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote.
Roll call, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Wutherspoon, Mr. Mersky. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Winarski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, resolution submitted and enacted by the city council of the city Erie administration requesting that the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority modify its Articles of Incorporation under Section 5605A4 of the Municipal Authorities Act to amend the membership of EMTAs board to reflect a board makeup composed of five members appointed by the city of Erie and four members to be appointed by the county of Erie, and to do so in a manner consistent with Section 5610 of the Act. Further, the city agrees that the EMTAs combined local match from the city and the county will be divided 55% city and 45% county, and further request EMTA to amend its Articles of Incorporation by specifying a term of existence of 10 years. And further, the city of Erie urges EMTA to revise its bylaws such that no less than one city and county board appointee will serve as officers on the EMTAs board. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Arrington.
Yes, I would like to say to everybody that this has been a long course for this EMTA issue, and we need to resolve it, and I think we do have a resolution to the issue. But when this first came out, I'm a voice for the community. I hear everything that everybody say, but my one concern was if we had the money to pay for this, because we don't need our taxes go up, going up, because I'm a taxpayer, just like each and every one of you. So I was assured that our taxes wouldn't be going up, so I'm definitely aboard. You know, my vote is yes, let's do this. Hopefully, county council will follow suit, and we can get back to business in Erie.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wutherspoon.
Thank you, sir. Initially, I was a no vote, not a no vote on the resolution of the problem, but a no vote of lack of information that was presented to me on how this was worked. Until now, I still do not have a plan that was handed to me in writing. In our caucus meeting, I have spoken with Mr. Paul Lichtenwalter, who I trust and respect his financial background, and Paul assured me that this was a good presentation, a good deal, and we worked hard for. It is sad, though, that it took this long, and Mr. Whalen hit the nail on the head, that it took our mayor and county exec to get together, it took PennDOT to put their foot down on us for this deal to come to fruition. That's the sad part about it. We have to put our personal likes and dislikes aside when you are running a city and a county for thousands of people, and this one issue is important, but it is not the main issue that affects the city. Crime is number one, as far as I'm concerned. Community involvement and funding community projects is number two, but it just saddens me that it took PennDOT to make it happen. And initially, I was a no vote, but listening to the citizens who came up today and the citizens who stopped me today, my goodness, at a funeral, they wanted to talk about EMTA, and they blaming us, council. What are your council, what's your council going to do, Mel? You going to pass it or what? Well, it's not us. Now we're going to see what county council has to do, or what they're going to do. That's going to be the key. It's time to get it done, move on, let the states know that we do negotiate even under stress and pressure. Mr. President?
Yes.
My vote will be yes, and I'll call for a toque.
All right. Any other, before we do that, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Brennan.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank all my colleagues on county council and city council for being open to compromise regarding the MTA charter, but especially those who were open before the PennDOT ultimatum. There was a lot of discussions, a lot of ideas on the table, a lot of coming together of both councils. I think that with the arrival of this charter resolution, you know, I think, I think everyone's happy that it's come to this, and I think we needed to get it passed. But as I noted in email to all council and the mayor this past Sunday, I'm concerned about committing our city to paying an amount for public transportation that we really have no, have not yet determined yet, so I have concerns for how we'll be paying for this. EMTAs provide an estimate of the total municipal requirement for the next four years, given that this resolution proposes 55% for the city and 45% for county local match. The financial advisor for Erie County has provided an estimate. The estimate notes that the city's local match would go up by 117,000 from 2016 to 2017, from what we're paying now, which is 280, that would go to 397, according to that estimate. Again, it's an estimate. This number would increase approximately 5% each year after. I've heard that the current structure for the MTA provided projections is arbitrary, and that we, they'll be reevaluated in the future, so that's good. I've also heard that this is likely, our share will, local match will go down, so that's also good. So we need to work with other municipalities, with everyone involved, with the, helping to finance the local match. Tonight, I will be voting yes to the MTA charter resolution, but I want to see a plan of action for financing the public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Any other discussion? Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we got a young crowd out there tonight, actually from McDowell, which actually is part of the county, which we are part of the county, and I don't know how informed you were with this whole EMTA process, but it did get down to the 11th hour where we had to come up with a compromise. And the definition of a compromise is a settlement of differences by mutual concessions. And what this compromise covered was the main issues in not renewing the charter by the county. One was board representation, which the city held on a six to three advantage, one which was addressed to change that to a five-four city advantage. Another one was the funding, the statewide local match and government match between the city and the county, which once again, that was addressed, and that was changed to address the, the people who ride the bus compared to the city and the county. A charter of 50 years, even though we had a citizen to be heard tonight, Mr. Koppelman said, maybe we should make it 60 so we don't have to go through this again in 50 years. Not a bad idea, but once again, a 50-year charter, which was taken down to a 10-year charter, an 80% decrease in what was originally planned, so once again compromised, as well as advisory board, which there hasn't been one there. We've had all aboard Erie who's done a great job, but the county asked to have a separate advisory board, which, no problem, we agreed to. And what people got to realize what is at stake if this compromise isn't passed. We have a Phase Two of a $70 million expansion in the heart of downtown Erie, which is halfway done, so we would lose $35 million in funding. EMTA wouldn't lose or not get $500,000 towards new buses. We would be looking at a possible 22% less bus and lift service in all of Erie County, as well as losing over 30 good-paying jobs. The last thing Erie or Erie County needs to do is lose more jobs, as well as we'd have an outside authority that would be running authority here with outside city residents or county residents on the board. So we have people out of Erie County making decisions what's going to happen in Erie and Erie County, which in all, none of this makes sense, and for no reason, any of us, whether it be on city council, county councils, should jeopardize that. And believe me, I've been a liaison for the EMTA now for five years, and I do have a passion here, so I'm really feel indebted to doing this the right way. We have a mayor senate and county executive, Dahl Camper, PennDOT. We have state representatives all sending letters in support of this compromise. I mean, we have a city council now, after these reports here, saying they are ready to move on and go forward with this compromise. If we don't do it for ourselves, we've got to do it for everybody out there in the city of Erie and Erie, in Erie County. It's, it's time to get the egos out of the way, it's time to quit grandstanding and trying to change things at the last moment after a compromise has been in place. It's time to do the right thing. Let's vote and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to, again, just kind of echo what has already been said in a lot of different ways. This has been a very long process. I remember the first conversation I had with the mayor was probably easily just over two years ago around the first conversation, the first issue or sign of issue in relating to the re-upping our charter and repassing our charter this year. The interesting part of this is that how it started was really unattractive. It was not like a peaceful, let's negotiate. It was more like, hey, this is what we're going to do, and you need to fall in line, or we're going to do what we want to do anyway. But we've come so far from that, and we've moved from those talking points to, to actually, as Mr. Winarski so eloquently broke down, all the components that we've adjusted since our original charter that was passed by this body, as well as the EMTA authority, from 50 to 10, and increasing the advisory committee, a shift in payment. We're paying less, I mean, excuse me, the county would be paying less, we'd be paying more, but at the same time, we're giving up a seat on the, on the authority while paying more. You know, I said all that to say, I think this is the best deal, and when I say deal, it's not like a business deal, and I think that's part of the issue. It's been articulated like it's a business deal, but it's really an opportunity for us to continue to provide and continue to provide better transportation service. It's not a business deal between Erie city council and county council and the mayor and the county executive. This is providing a service to the citizens of the city of Erie and the broader Erie County that is necessary for the quality of life to be at the highest level possible. And we have made it, we've whittled it down into political pontification, and we've whittled it down into a business deal. With all that said, I think this is a great opportunity to be able to say, you know what, even, even under distress, maybe it happened, maybe we got to this point, you know, that's what deadlines are for, right? And the deadlines make us put an end to things that we would continue to have going on and on and on. In school, you get a homework assignment, you had to have it in by a certain time, and you, most, a lot of students, not all of you, I'm sure, but you may procrastinate till the night before to knock it out, because you know it's due tomorrow, so it makes you ramp up a little bit and get it done. And so I think we see some of that, but I really think that this is an exercise in really working hard and really getting through a lot of minutia and a lot of mess, and we've come up with something I think that is very positive. And I'll end with this. One of the citizens came and spoke and referenced five years, and the five years in relation to the court proceeding was not a five-year charter proposal. It was more investigating the extension for five years of the current charter so we could work all these other nuances out without service being inhibited and without the state coming in to take over service. So that's what the five-year piece was in relation to the court proceedings from the city. Excuse me. And the other thing that, I believe, the same citizen said that, well, it's just five years, so well, if that's the argument, it has to go both ways, because if it's just five years, the city should go down. Well, it's only five years that the county can come up, and the city has been the legislative entity that has made all the concessions thus far. I think that's fair and accurate and verifiable facts to make. So I think right now, this is the best deal we can, we're the best situation that we can have, because we can't afford to lose 20% plus ridership and routes and opportunities for people to get where they need to go. We can't afford to lose jobs. We can't afford to, to have a half-done, incomplete project that could potentially add economic development and jobs at the tone of $35 million of development in our city. We can't afford to lose that for five years or for anything less than just doing the right thing. So I will be voting in favor of this, and I'm hoping that this message from all of the legislators of this region would be followed and adhered to, and the county council would see the wisdom in what we're doing to move forward.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Winarski, or Potowski, I apologize. Yes, it's always hard to follow Curtis and Jimmy, when they're so eloquent as they are, but Curtis hit it on the head. The first meeting we had, which was never acknowledged at the time by the media, was that we had never met. Well, we had met, and it was a very contentious meeting. There was no progress. It reminded me of a history lesson where the North Koreans and the United States had agreed to end the Korean War, but spent every meeting arguing about what side of the table each representative would sit, and it was more ultimatums than there was negotiations. A teacher of mine once told me back in high school that for reasonable things to happen... A teacher of mine once told me back in high school that for reasonable things to happen, reasonable people would have to meet. And finally, after 18 months or whatever, people started to see the wisdom of having true negotiations and not demands. And that's what negotiations are all about. I personally had my reservations about some of the items that were discussed. As an accountant, the financing especially bothered me. There's a realization that when people first looked at the first numbers of 330 versus 270, the average person would say, well, 330 is more than 270. Not taking into account that of that 330,000 that the county contributes, and we can play games with whatever percentage that is, 38% or 24%, depending on what figure we use, that comes out of the city taxpayers. So when you subtract that amount out of 330 and put it onto the other side of the ledger, the city has been, for a number of years, been paying more than the county. And that's a realization that we understood because the majority of the ridership comes from the city of Erie and majority of that comes from areas where people do not have the ability, such as myself or others, to drive up to the mall, to drive anyplace they want, to go to the doctors. So, you know, the argument was about our ability to represent those people which reside in the city, which are important to be represented by us. And that was why, one of the arguments was why we fought so hard to keep representation. I can't represent the people in the city of Erie if I don't have a voice. And the other plans did not acknowledge that. Nobody really wins when you negotiate. I gave up something, Jimmy gave up something, Curtis gave up something, Dave, Mel, Bobby and Sonia, we all gave up something. We had to, to make this happen. So now, tonight, we're going to make that right. We're going to vote. Hopefully, by the way I understand it, we're going to pass this. And now the pressure will be on the county to do the proper thing. We have negotiated, we have dropped our delay to the contract, we have dropped a number of people, we have given them one more representative, we have assumed more financial responsibility. So right now, let's pass this. Let's not revert back to the days of Korea where we're going to argue about what side to put the chairs on. Let's get it done and do what's right for the people that we represent and the people who, like Julie, need the transportation. And that's why tonight I will vote yes. And I have no problem with that and I think it's a proper thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Just some final thoughts here. You know, first off, I want to enter into the record that, you know, Secretary Leslie Richards, I want to thank her, the secretary of PennDOT, she wrote a letter to council endorsing this plan, also to our state delegation. Every state representative and every state senator, Republican and Democrat, that has jurisdiction in Erie County, all endorsed this plan. This plan, it's a true compromise. Nobody gets everything that they want, but everybody gets something that they can live with. When we look at EMTA, it's vital to our people and the people that we represent. And when we look at this plan, even though it was messy, even though it was long overdue, even though it took many winding roads to get to where it is, at the end of the day, we truly have a regional charter that was built on regional cooperation. And it was messy. Cooperation and collaboration often is messy. But we're at this point now and I want to thank the county executive and the mayor and my colleagues here on city council and on county council. Because throughout these months, this wasn't a vacuum where everyone had hardened positions and nobody was talking to the other side. Pretty much everybody had conversations formally, informally, with our colleagues over at the courthouse and with other people. And some of those made the media, some of those did not, but we were working on this. But it is now, we're at the point where this is the plan, this is the deal on the table. And the 10-year charter provides stability for the riders so that we're not back here in another year or two negotiating and hashing this out again. Local match will be have to, have to be paid regardless of the length of the charter by the two entities. And so, moving forward, that is something we're going to have to look at. But whether we had the existing charter or a new charter, local match is local match and it has to be paid to PennDOT. But what it comes down to is it's about priorities. You know, I saw on Facebook, people comparing the bus service to fireworks and they're saying, well, the city can't pay for fireworks, so how can they pay for a bus? That's misplaced priorities. We can't compare the fun of fireworks to people's mobility and independence. It's just, it's not an equation that works. And I'm confident that county council will do the right thing and compromise and not play with the mobility and independence of our transit-dependent citizens. And with that, we're going to take the vote here. And what we're going to do for the people in the audience, and we're going to use the tote board up here. We use this usually for big votes or if we have company like you guys today. So with that council on the side, you have your yes or no, and you can take your vote and then I'll put it up on the screen. All right, Ms. Rose, ready?
Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. This resolution adopts by seven yays, nays, zero. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
All right, committee reports. We'll start this time with Mr. Kowalski.
Well, we'll keep it brief because it's been a long day. Just quickly, Curtis and I had the pleasure of attending the Pennsylvania Municipal League recently and one of the, three of the issues that really caught my attention, and Curtis and I sat in on the one, was land banking, which this council here has been very adamant in getting that passed. And when you listen to some of the agencies that exist out east and the things that they have done, you, I hope that we do make some progress on getting ours done because just listening to the various agencies that were represented there, there's a lot to be said for it. And we went over the pros and cons of it and I think Curtis and I coming back, we feel a lot better about it. Another issue that was discussed was the various pension issues and bills which are on the table by the legislature. And as the representative to the pension plans, I will take that knowledge back with me to the meetings. And economic development was brought up and as we toured Lancaster, it was interesting to watch a city with many, many old buildings, which had not been destroyed, but rather reinvented, much like we did with some of ours before we tore ours down back in the 60s. There's a lot to be said for, as Curtis said earlier, about the revolving loan fund which we're setting up, because you've seen it at work in Lancaster. We've seen high rises going up, we've seen the result. I believe they, they were the benefactor of one of the crises or nizes that was passed out recently. So we can only hope that that comes to Erie because watching the development of that city and the downtown, how nice it looks, we're on the right road, but, you know, we could use a little more impetus, such as they were using. And I just think that would be great for the city. And as Curtis said earlier about that loan fund, as I was driving by the Dairy Queen, doesn't seem like a big deal, the one on Pine Avenue, but they're the benefactor of one of our revolving loan funds. And just looking at now and watching the development of that, a business that easily probably could have left and went over the border or gone anywhere else, after a two-year problem with some of their bids and everything else, and thanks to the hard worker of our Chris Groner, they are, they are starting to develop that building and they're going to make it look more modern, they're going to add some features. And I think we need to be proactive in, anytime we can start and add more money to this revolving loan fund, we need to reinvest in ourselves. We can't always look to the state or the federal government to help us. Sometimes the answer is right at our doorstep. So I'm glad that we passed it tonight and it's good to see those results. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a couple of meetings, but I'll try to be brief on those meetings. I went to the Little Italy Realization Meeting, I reviewed, re-reviewed the burn grant and all the benefits that that grant is bringing to the neighborhood as far as code enforcement initiatives and also a lot of the enforcement efforts of the Erie Police. There's a lot of activity going on there, so that's, we had a report on that. Also, the Port Authority, I attend the Port Authority meeting. They're working, a couple of things, they're working on the fishing charter with handicap accessibility, so that's, that's good news. The annual meeting's coming up soon and they handed out a year-end report, which I'm just starting to review. It's a pretty, pretty big document. I wanted to note, I did, we actually, city council had a, we had a study session on the land bank, which Kaz mentioned, he had some discussions on that at the other conference. But we met with the redevelopment authority, city zoning department, code enforcement. We talked about the land bank and reviewed a draft ordinance and we kind of explained how it would be put together. It's still in formulation, but a land bank is a tool that can be used by our city to help improve neighborhoods and repurpose vacant and abandoned lots. So we're hoping to keep that going forward and adopt that in a future date. And last, I want to talk about the Metro 100 that was mentioned earlier about the, at the Jefferson Society. There was four sessions, four hours, there was discussions, presentations on the Erie Comp Plan by the authors of the Comp Plan, Erie Refocused. Session one was understanding the principles and what they are and how they're critical to the framework and the entire plan. Session two was choosing initiating the right projects, how to determine the projects, identifying costs, timetables, impacts. Session three was called general and specific partnerships. We talked about partnerships that were needed for success, needed to activate projects and keep them going moving forward. And the last session was James Fallows, who's an author for The Atlantic, he authored article, a couple of articles on Erie, which is great to see and brings a lot of spotlight on Erie. But he discussed his impressions of Erie and what he thinks will make Erie successful in the future. So I think it was a, it was a well-worth time for that afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report, but I would ask administration to look into the possibility of installing a street light on Holland between Fourth and Fifth. My neighbor was approached, she's a nurse at Hammett, and she was approached on two different occasions, she say by a homeless person, but I'm not sure who it was, but it was very dark. She reports to work at 5:00 in the morning. So I'd like you to look at that, look into that possibility. Thank you.
Mrs. Arrington.
I would just like to say, I would like to thank my fellow councilmen, you know, for us coming together and making the right vote for our city. And it was a hard decision, you know, it really was, because at the end of the day, we all have the best interest of our city at heart. And, you know, I don't want to see anybody taxes get raised. I want to make sure if we're going into this, we have enough money to pay for it. But at the end of the day, we came together and thank all of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just again, wanted to say a few things that Mr. Kowalski mentioned on our trip to the Pennsylvania League Conference a couple of weeks ago. Mentioned the land banking, which is relevant to us today. We also sat in a leadership presentation that I want to bring, I'll bring some information back to this body as well, just some different approaches at looking at old problems. And sometimes just a different perspective and gives us a different bird's eye view or a slant perspective on an old problem will give us new ideas on how to solve it. So I'm really interested in that. One of the things that, why this, excuse me, resolution under New Business that I spoke on, as well as council president Mersky spoke on in relation to this revolving loan fund, is the power of reuse. I've heard Mr. Brennan of the last few years really talk about reusing old buildings or older facilities and not tearing them down, et cetera. And I bought into that already, but it's amazing when you can actually see it in reality. In some of the spaces we were in, in Lancaster, I was able to kind of visualize and touch some of the things that Mr. Brennan has been talking about for years. And so I'm really excited about some possibilities of being able to reuse instead of tear down. We have a lot of, we have enough green space to a certain extent. We have enough vacant properties and blighted, you know, plots of land, but I think we could really reutilize some of our beautiful old buildings and infrastructure. Finally, I think we all have the right and we all have the liberty as citizens in this country, and really honestly, if we could be free, you know, citizens of the world, right, to have our priorities and like what we like and love what we want and put energy towards what we want. But I heard something today, and this is not a judgment on any level, negative, but it just reminds me, someone talked about priorities, and I think dog park is a wonderful thing. People, I love dogs. I wish I could have a dog. I'm not home enough to have a dog, right? But we also have children in our community who don't feel safe going into neighborhood parks for whatever reason and may want to go to the same space that a dog park is hosted in. And people are more concerned about a dog having a birthday party on a playground than they were a kid being able to have a safe green space or a safe playground to play in. Twisted, in my opinion, perspective. And so again, maybe we need to have a space that's separate where maybe the kids can't access where the dogs are, or maybe more importantly, the dogs can't access where the kids are. Excuse me. But I think that we have to be careful being so, and the point of saying that is to respectfully being so narrow-minded on certain things that we forget, like there's bigger issues. And I would rather have a kid from any part of the city being able to go to a beautiful green space playground and feel safe and have to have my own dog in the backyard or walk around my neighborhood on a leash. I'd rather have a child be able to run free, and I love dogs, than to be more concerned about a dog running free because, and the child running into the dog's space. I don't know, that was another soapbox moment, but I just, they just really, because our priorities have to be about our babies first. Our priorities have to be about our next level of citizenry and our next city council members and mayor and the next Melvin Witherspoon that is developing right now somewhere in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski.
Wow. Thank you, everybody, and thanks for all the young, young kids coming out tonight. It's committee report time and normally I do an EMTA thing, which I know I gave many reasons this evening why we should pass the compromise that we did this evening, but here's a few things that I hope to report on in the future regarding the EMTA. One, the continuation or the second phase of the expansion project here in downtown Erie. Secondly, how the needed parking garage, which is part of that expansion in downtown Erie, how that is going. We need additional parking downtown. This is just another viable thing that is part of this whole picture of this. How the much, how the new taxing retail entities that are going to be on the floor level of this parking garage in downtown Erie are developing. And finally, how the new grocery store, that's been a topic for the last two, two and a half years, but this has all been part of the plan of the expansion to have a downtown grocery store here in the heart of the city, which people have been asking for, for a long time. And then as well as just to see what difference all that, as it comes together, makes for the downtown and its citizens of Erie. Other than that, my speech is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few things to report. First and foremost, I want to thank the students from McDowell High School that are here tonight. We hope that you learned a lot and we hope that this was as informative as it was entertaining. And so, thank you. I don't want to, you know, reiterate what a lot of people have said. We did have the study session on the land bank, that ordinance should be coming down soon and we're looking forward to passing that and moving forward with that. That is one of the key components to get started on Erie Refocused and so we want to do that. I did attend Erie Refocus for part of the Metro 100. I had to go back to work, but then I also came back for the evening session. And, you know, the challenges that are facing the city are extreme, but I don't think there's anything that's broken with Erie that can't be fixed within Erie. And it's up to us to do it and it's going to take everybody working together and those conversations will be- And those conversations will be had. We just had a, I just received an email from Allison Schmidt, our Assistant Director of Economic Development, to get those moving. We did have, and just so that the community knows, we had huge transition in our economic development office from the passing of Melanie Johnson to Kim Green, the director's exit from the position. And so there has been transition in that office, which has delayed the implementation part and the rollout. But we, now that everyone is stable up there and in their proper positions, we're ready to go with that. With the revolving loan fund, Councilman Jones and I, and I think all of council have voted unanimously on this, we're in agreement that we need to do everything we can to invest in our community and promote business development in Erie. And so this, if it's able to be created, will allow us to have one more tool in the toolbox to do that. And I just wanted to draw a note, even though we didn't vote on it, I wanted to thank the Erie Community Foundation. They gave away $10 million this past week. But one of the things that they did was give $4 million to Mercia's University to develop an innovation district in downtown Erie. It's gonna be a partnership between Erie, between VelocityNet, McManus, M'Salve and Associates, and Mercia's University with a focus on cybersecurity and data science. So all you kids that are out there, these are jobs of the future. So it might be something you want to look at pursuing as you go to college. This could be a game changer for Erie for growth and prosperity, and I look forward to partnering with those businesses and educational leaders to move this forward. I think it's gonna be great for downtown Erie and great for the greater Erie region. And with that, we will, oh, I'm sorry, gosh, I'm ready to leave. Ms. Dan Kavitch isn't here. Administration?
I promised to be very brief. Thank you. It's actually nice to be back at a meeting. So I was fortunate enough to attend the Pennsylvania Municipal League in Lancaster last week, and Mayor Gray was a gracious host. Lancaster is a beautiful, walkable city. Unfathomable to have buildings in the downtown that were there from the 1700s. So the architecture, the walkability, again, of the downtown was wonderful. I am very proud to say that the city very will host the 118th Annual Meeting of the Pennsylvania Municipal League. So leaders and movers and shakers from around the Commonwealth will converge in the city of Erie on October 5th to 8th in 2017. So we're looking forward to playing host and welcoming these folks to our community. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Take a look at the beautiful Pink Fountain that we have outside of Perry Square, and remember that early detection is the best cure that we have at this point in time. Want to thank the Onyx family for moving into the city of Erie over on Ninth and Bacon. I had the opportunity to attend a groundbreaking with Mayor Sennett. Wonderful family, the Wagner family is consolidating their businesses, expanding jobs. They build industrial furnaces, beautiful facility. They've done a wonderful job, and we certainly welcome them to the Erie community. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to take a moment. When Mrs. Beck was speaking, maybe we remembered something I forgot, is to say how well she did representing the city in relation to selling and kind of the commercial of Erie hosting the Pennsylvania Municipal League Conference and Summit next year. So you represented us well, and I think that's important to hear. Sometimes you do work and you don't hear anything positive. So you did great, and you represented the city well, and the mayor's office well.
Absolutely. And before we go, I do want to thank this council. When you have big issues like the EMTA issue, oftentimes, there's contention, and there's back and forth, and there's, but everyone on this, we really worked well together. And I want to thank everybody for a seven-zero vote. I think it sends a strong message to the Erie community that, that there is leadership here in City Hall, and we're prepared to move forward. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting.
City Council adjourns at 9:07. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Yes.
Okay, you tell me where.